President Byrne?
Here.
Trustees Cook?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Takaoka? Brown?
Here.
Schultz? Marport?
Here.
We have a core in present. Will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board tonight? Okay. Let's see. First reporter is Assistant Village Manager Oktoberfest, Joe Carey.
Thank you, Your Honor. This coming Saturday on September 22nd, we have our 14th Annual Oktoberfest Celebration at the Vernon Hills Metro Station, which is at 75 Route 45 in Vernon Hills. Again this year, the events are taking place from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We have a number of free events for children, including free airbrush tattoos of the non-permanent variety, free inflatables, kids crafts, Twist and Shout balloon artists, which was always very, very popular, a free hayride, as well as free pumpkins from Menards. So we've got a number of different events for children. In the evening, we've got a raffle that we're holding, as well as from 7:00 to 10:00 o'clock at night, we have Kaleidoscope Eyes performing for the evening's entertainment. But it's a great event. We really appreciate everyone's support. And again, the raffle that will be done, the proceeds of that will go to the nonprofit organizations that participate at this year's event.
Okay. All right, next is the adjunct status update.
Yes.
Adjudication.
So, as the board might recall, as part of the budget process for this past year, we included money towards the adjudication hearing. What we're looking to do, and what you'll see in the board meeting in October, is an update to the village's adjudication process to align itself with existing state law. As part of that, we will also be looking at changing the amounts for fines and fees, which will be a discussion that we'll have during the committee of the whole, to make sure that our existing fine structure aligns itself with our neighboring communities, and if necessary, increase them, should that be appropriate. As part of the adjudication update, we will be looking to hire a hearing officer, adjudication judge, and so that'll be something that'll go to your attention at that time as well.
Okay. All right. Okay, next item is omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve A through G?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustees Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka? Brown? Schultz? Marport?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Right there. Well, you know, we tried... Okay, anyway, motion carries. Where's my seat? Got any complaints about it? Okay, well, I'm happy you're happy. Okay. All right. Next is... Any unfinished business or new business to come before the board? Trustee Cook?
Two questions. I was just wondering, in October, our second meeting is Tuesday, October 15th, and this is only just a personal request. I will be back in town October the 16th, and I was wondering if we could move it to either the evening of the 16th or the 17th. That would be just as...
Wednesday? I don't... I mean, I don't... If everybody agrees, it's okay with me.
I'm fine with it.
So you want it the Wednesday?
If that's...
The Wednesday's the 16th, right?
Yeah.
Hold on, I have to look at my schedule to see if I'm...
All right.
Tuesday is when the meeting's scheduled, it'd be the 17th or, Tom, you said even the 18th. Yeah, either one of those two would be. So the 17th or 18th. Whichever works for everybody else.
Wednesday's fine with me.
Wednesday or the Thursday is fine.
Okay.
So Wednesday?
I don't know.
I can do Wednesday.
Okay.
Everybody can do Wednesday?
Don't know about that.
It is the 17th Wednesday.
Yes. Right, thank you.
Okay.
It's a national holiday?
I don't think... All right, so we're gonna meet on the 17th Wednesday?
Correct.
Okay.
And then my other question was, where are we at on the attorney packets? And are we gonna be getting those pretty soon, or...
I hope so.
Because I was hoping to get that maybe before last week.
The attorney packets are ready and labeled. I can hand them out tonight if you'd like them.
Yeah, do that, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business to come before the board? Do we have to go to closed session for anything?
No, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
So made.
Is there a... There's a second. Okay, roll call.
Trustees Takaoka?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Schultz? Marport?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to call the committee to hold the order. First item is approval of the minutes from the meeting of August 14th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is second.
Second.
Thirty comments, questions, deletions, corrections, and and... If not, roll call.
Trustees Brown?
Aye.
Schultz? Marport?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Okay, the first item is Petland Pet Shop. Who's in here for that?
Is it okay to pass some items out?
What's that?
Can we pass some items out?
Yeah, sure.
President Byrne and trustees, my name is Carl Swanson. Vernon Hills is a beautiful community, and we look forward to doing business here. Petland is the largest pet-focused store in the nation with over 200 locations worldwide. Petland is ranked number 20 internationally, is one of the best franchise operations in the world. I'd like to introduce the team I brought with me. Again, my name is Carl Swanson, and I own Petland Naperville, and I own Petland Chicago Ridge, and I've been a franchisee of Petland for three years. I'm also the president of the Illinois Pet Lovers Association, which is a group of responsible pet store owners and industry partners on behalf of the pet industry. Prior to that, I spent 25 years as a commercial insurance agent and owning a business since 1998. I brought with me Ryan Hamel. Ryan's been with Petland the franchise for 14 years. Ryan's a leading... was a leading business consultant with them, working with the franchisees, and he's also managed numerous top franchisee locations and owned a Petland franchise of his own. This year, Ryan made a decision to come work with myself. I brought Dr. Jeremy Bushes with me.
Johnny, step up and give us your name and address.
Dr. Jeremy Bushes.
And your address?
4012 Verbena Court in Naperville.
Okay, and then this other gentleman?
Ryan Hamel, 941 Hanson Street in Batavia.
And you're in Naperville?
I actually live in St. Charles.
Okay, we need your address for the record.
Okay, I'm gonna give the Naperville address, the 720 South Illinois 59, Suite 112, Naperville.
Ever asleep?
No, I sold my house three weeks ago. I'm buying another house in three weeks. I live in a hotel.
Okay, I'm just...
This will speak volumes about the operation if he's actually staying there.
No kidding. So, anyway, Dr. B., as we call him, has worked with Petland for over five years. He's been in the vet since 1986, and he owns multiple veterinary hospitals. I also brought with me Kurt Fiedler. He's a partner, Moreland-Fiedler, and he's the lobbyist firm that represents Illinois Pet Lovers Association and is very aware of any legislation.
And who else does he represent?
Kurt Fiedler, Moreland-Fiedler. I also represent the village of Vernon Hills.
Did you know that?
Did I know that?
Yeah.
I did know that.
After the fact.
After the fact, but yes.
Okay. I don't know how does that affect anything?
It's his conflict, not ours.
Okay, that's... Well, lawyers never have a conflict, so...
No, it doesn't matter. They like conflict.
Yeah, they like... They get paid for handling conflicts, that's right.
Also, you've received letters of referral from the mayor of Chicago Ridge, Mayor Tokar, from the Naperville Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Cherico with Naperville. He has asked that if anyone has any questions, please feel free to call him direct. He'd be glad to answer your questions. I guess I want to get right to the meat of it, and I'd like to address where we source our puppies. We do bring in puppies from hobby breeders and professional breeders regulated by the USDA. Our breeders are inspected not just by the USDA, but also the state, the American Kennel Club. Petland Corporate inspects breeders. Other Petland franchisees, like myself, inspect the breeders. I have been to inspect 150 breeders. My staff goes to visit breeders. My veterinarian has been to visit breeders. We take this very seriously, and I would say that most breeders do not meet our standards. In fact, the vast majority of breeders do not meet our standards. In 2017, myself and others, including the American Kennel Club, the Illinois State Veterinarians Association, even the Humane Society of the United States, were instrumental in passing the Safe Pets Bill on a statewide level. This bill makes it impossible for a substandard breeder to sell puppies to an Illinois pet store. The law states a pet store may not purchase a puppy from a USDA-regulated breeder if they have had any direct noncompliant items on an inspection in the prior two years. The most recent USDA inspection report must be obtained prior to purchase of a puppy, and it's the pet store's obligation and responsibility to provide that USDA inspection report. Every puppy must be microchipped prior to being sold. All shelters and rescues are required by the law to scan for microchips of incoming dogs, and if traced to a pet store, because it is on a national registry, contact the pet store so that they can come and take the dog and rehome it so that there is no burden on the shelter itself. It is shown now that less than 5% of dogs sold come from a pet store, and the dogs that you see in a shelter invariably do not come from pets, or very, very few would come from a pet store. Thank you for your consideration, and we're certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
How much is a husky puppy?
A husky puppy?
What do you get a range?
That's a tough question, because I'm gonna...
I said range. You don't have to give me that.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to give me $3,000 for a husky puppy.
Okay, so you won't sell many of them?
They're number one breed, actually.
Did you sell?
Yeah.
Three grand a pop?
No, that's probably... The average is less than that, is what the average is, but yeah.
Okay. All right. Cocker spaniel.
We haven't had a cocker spaniel in a long time.
Really?
Yeah, they were popular when I was growing up, but not so much today. Our average... Ryan, you wanna take this?
Sure, sure. There's no denying, you're not gonna find any place, probably in the... Certainly not Vernon Hills, but probably not in the state, where you can find a puppy more expensive than a Petland. And we don't hide that fact, but we are proud of the fact you're not gonna be able to find a place where you get more value for your puppy than Petland as well. The average price of when our puppy's going home is probably gonna be, depending on the week or the month, somewhere between $2,200 and $2,600. And that depends on which breeds are popular at what given times. But the value that we've got is just as much of that, if not more, with all the vet care that we have going to our puppies before, during, and after their stay. And we've never actually had more success than we do right now, whether it's in Naperville, Chicago Ridge, Illinois, or even nationwide, actually. Our customers are coming to us.
Is there some kind of guarantee?
All kinds of guarantees, actually. We have a great health warranty, health guarantee that goes 30 days for any kind of viral issues that come up. We have a hereditary congenital warranty as well. We even have a lifetime program that is a new program that we're proud to announce here in the very near future. But the best warranty in the entire state could be the best.
Now, do you actually treat... Do you have a vet shop there at the Petland?
We inspect them when they come in. We look them over and re-inspect them, and then we're there twice a week to make sure everyone's okay and talk to the staff and make sure they're doing everything right with medications, warmines, vaccines, and this kind of thing. So we're in there twice a week.
So how long are the dogs there to puppies?
Okay, sure. Our goal is to be there as short a time as humanly possible, because we're just temporary housing to finally get home for them. But the average is gonna be between 14 and 21 days. Between 14 and 21 days from the time we get them to finally find a permanent home.
Well, is there a state limitation on that, you know, that's part of the law?
Is there state law?
Well, I mean, could they be there six months?
I guess technically it's possible, since every single puppy that we ever buy finds a home, but we've never had that happen before. Certainly, some go home in a couple of days. Some might take a couple of extra weeks.
Where do you get a lot of people walking in, "I want this kind of dog"?
I'm sorry?
Do you have people walking in asking for a particular breed?
We certainly do. We're a very data-driven business, so we have a ton of information about what is popular, not just in our stores, but mostly online. The truth is, when it comes to puppies, the business has changed, not just in retail stores, but across the entire country in the past 10 years, where most all of the puppies sold in the world right now are sold online. A lot more than in stores, of course. And that's where a lot of our customers come from. They start online, and then they call, make an appointment, come in to see us.
Do you sell other animals?
Our store here will sell puppies, kittens, small animals, birds, and some fish.
Small animals being what?
Hamsters, bunnies, guinea pigs, possibly ferrets.
Okay.
So, do you take these puppies in on consignment, or how do you...
We buy the best puppies from the best breeders at the highest prices that you'll ever think of. So we buy the puppies. They're ours, and then we find homes for them and we sell them.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you say the best value...
Trustee Brown? I got the doctor lid is light up about five minutes ago.
Oh.
Okay, you gotta hit the button. Do we have a button for Trustee Brown yet?
Do you mind if I clarify something about the veterinarian?
Yeah.
It's important to me that Dr. Bushes does not work for us at all. We are not veterinarians, but we work with local veterinarians in each of our communities to guide us and consult with us about healthcare, including having authority over what we do in our stores. So he does not work for us at all.
Okay, Dr. Oppenheim?
Thank you for coming in, bringing this to our attention. So I spent my lunch hour today going to a couple of your potential competitors, asking about their policies, and both of them said that is their national policy not to sell animals of these type of any kind. It's the... They just feel philosophically that that's not appropriate, and given that there are millions of dogs that are homeless, et cetera, and there are millions of dogs that are euthanized each year. I was told that that's not how those businesses do it. I also looked up and saw that there are some Petlands across the country that also choose not to sell animals, but they only hold adoption events. So I don't want to give up all my time, but I would just like to have you respond to that. Would that be something you'd be willing to do?
I'd certainly like to address those. I'm not sure who the competition that you refer to, if they're the larger organizations like PetSmart, Petco...
Those two, yes.
Pet Supplies Plus. They are not our competition. We do not consider them direct competition at all. We do, of course, sell dog food and some supplies that we would compete with, but their business model since day one, since day one, has been 99% dog supplies. And literally, their revenue right now is probably 95% nutrition. So they don't even sell dog supplies per se. They sell dog food. That's their entire business model. Whereas ours, in this store specifically, would probably be... Over 50% of our revenue would be pets overall, combined. They are not our competition. It's a different business model, and they understand that. We work with them at the national level, actually, to improve breed standards across the country. So our Petland president, Joe Watson, and our other Petland leadership in Idaho, they work with the president and CEOs of Petco and PetSmart to do lots of good things in the national stage. The Petlands that don't have puppies right now, there are actually not that many of them, but that was... They were specifically built and designed to have a different business model and even a different profit model. And I'm pretty familiar with them, because some of those were actually in my territory when I was a consultant for Petland. Nothing wrong with those stores' business model. It's just a different business model than what Swanson, Mr. Swanson, has done so far in Illinois. And our idea for this store would be that we do find homes for pets, as well as pet supplies as well.
Trustee Brown?
You mentioned that with the high price of your puppies, you get the best value. But what do you mean by that? Because you can go and adopt a puppy that you're saving the puppy's life, and it's not gonna be three grand. And then you say you guarantee the puppy for 30 days. That is not a lot of time. So can you explain it a little bit more?
Sure, sure. We absolutely do support working in the shelters. And we sort of support the right of the family to choose whatever dog is right for them, whether it be an adult, which is what most of the... Which is what most of the animals in shelters and humane societies are. The puppies they have are well, need homes just as much as anybody else. We support that 100%, but we do recognize that what the public is looking... Much of the public is looking for are specific purpose-bred, purebred puppies that fits their specific lifestyle and their family. We don't say that as one is right, one is wrong. We're saying that's what the public wants, because that's what they vote for with their pocketbook. They are purchasing puppies online. They're buying puppies from breeders. In fact, your citizens in Vernon Hills are doing that right now. We did the research. Otherwise, we would not be here. The citizens that live are already searching online to find puppies, purebred puppies from breeders. Otherwise, we wouldn't have decided that this would be a good place. The value that goes on with each puppy encompasses a lot of things. Number one, we think the best value is the fact that you do have a great puppy from a great breeder, and we're proud of that fact. We don't hide any of that. The vet care that is incorporated, not just are they up to date on everything that you would expect a puppy to be at that moment, but before any of our customers can play with that puppy, they've been at least inspected and approved by two, usually three, different veterinarians along the process. We do send them home with a 30-day viral protection, which is the best in the industry. There is nobody offering a longer viral protection or sickness-type thing than that. And then we have an 18-month warranty against any kind of hereditary problems or congenital problems as well. We do think that our warranty itself is right up there with the best in the state, as well as the country. We also have a lifetime training program that goes home with every puppy to make sure that they are prepared to be a good member of that family as soon as possible. We also have over $500 of supplies that goes home with each puppy, with each family, to make sure they have what they need for that transition process. We even provide in-home, excuse me, in-house training classes out of our Naperville location. They can come and talk to a professional dog trainer right there in the store themselves. So lots of programs, lots of value, including AKC Insurance, including a lifetime microchip and Amber Alert systems in case your dog is ever lost or stolen. All of that stuff comes included in the price of the puppy.
Trustee Marport? Oh, it's...
Okay, so, you know, I did some research myself. My neighbor's a veterinarian. He's got multiple locations. You do acknowledge that, you know, when you do Google Petland, you guys had some issues nine years ago, right? Getting puppies from questionable sources, right, quote-unquote, puppy mills. You don't have to respond yet.
Okay.
So that's nine years ago. He said, you know, he acknowledges that. I want you to acknowledge that. He said, you know, you guys have cleaned that issue up over the course of nine years. I'll assume that to be the case. But then, you know, something, you know, that I saw as recent as October of last year, you had an issue with Campylobacter infections in puppies and, you know, your consumers were getting sick from it. And when I saw that, and then I see the location, you're like right next to two restaurants. So I'm thinking, maybe someone goes into the Petland, you know, goes, touches the puppies. God forbid, one of those puppies has an infection. Then they decide to go eat at Sushi Thai or Corner Bakery, and then, to me, then it becomes sort of a health issue. So what are your thoughts on that?
Okay. The issue from nine years ago, I'd have to see specifically what you're looking at. There was a large lawsuit, probably back around that time, and I would answer that by saying, basically, every one of those lawsuits were dropped, and so we paid a lot of... I say we, because I used to work for Petland Corporate for 14 years. Spent a lot of money and won every case. There's... If you look up Petland at any moment in the last 10 to 12 years, you're going to find negative articles on Google, because there are a lot of people that don't think what we do is right, and I understand that. I think what we do is right, because I do it myself. I never would have taken this job 14 years ago if I didn't do the research myself to make sure I wasn't joining a company that I detested or that I thought did something morally reprehensible. And I would say 100% that if the things that are said about many Petlands by some, by a few people, I would not work here. I would refuse to work with Petland completely. We love pets just as much, if not more, than anyone else. And if half the things that were said by the people that oppose us were true, none of us would work here. Dr. B. wouldn't want to work with us at all. Kurt wouldn't want to represent pet stores on any kind of level at all. The Campylobacter issue, I am familiar with it, more familiar than I ever wanted to be with that. I don't want to sound patronizing, but I'm going to throw away the word, the phrase, "much ado about nothing." If you read some of the actual statements by the CDC, what you recognize is the word outbreak literally means the number two or more. And it also means that if you read the actual press releases, you can say that it was diagnosed with this, 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 or symptoms thereof. So there were a few, literally a few, customers diagnosed with Campylobacter that had been to a Petland recently. There was not a single diagnosis that they could actually tie to it. But if the rate of Campylobacter appeared in Petland customers at the same rate that it does in Walmart customers, based on the number one source of Campylobacter is uncooked chicken, if the rate was the same in Petland as any of those other rates, we would have had over, I think the number was 144,000 cases. And at the most, there's less than 100. So the rate of Campylobacter that they even suspected made it a lot more dangerous to go into Walmart still, many, 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 many times more dangerous than going to a Petland. Campylobacter is not an issue at all. I would like to address... Well, never mind. Go ahead.
I think to put that in perspective, the Center for Disease Control Diagnosis, over a million cases of Campylobacter a year that come across to them. 99 represents .0003% or even smaller number. Petland cooperated with CDC in every way to get to the root cause of it. As soon as we became aware of it, we provided training materials to all staff. We also require them to take a test, proving they actually read the training materials and that they know what Campylobacter is and how you can get it, and it is by getting feces in your mouth, in your eyes, and that's how potentially it could happen. But we have addressed that. We just haven't had an issue with it.
We addressed it from a training perspective, because we want to train people if there's something out there to be learned. Petland Corporate did work closely, hand-in-hand with the CDC in several states and Department of Health, to do research. And basically, what they found was they could not offer us any actual... They offered us advice on signage, just in case, but they could not give us any advice at all operationally of what we could do better. They couldn't find a single thing. They couldn't find a single thing that we were not doing as good as we could have when it comes to protecting our customers or employees against that.
Okay, Trustee Oppenheim?
So first, can you respond to that earlier question that I had regarding the number of...
Yes, please.
The number of dogs that are homeless in shelters and the number that are euthanized?
Most recent studies, and actually, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and pass one of these out, if you don't mind. Not sure which one. Most recent studies show that there are about 5 million dogs annually euthanized in this country, which is 5 million too many, but years ago, it was certainly much more, like 20 million. And thankfully, mostly spay-neuter programs have reduced that numbers drastically over the past 20 years. We're thankful of that. The numbers also show that there are about 8 million new puppies purchased each year. So there's actually a shortage of puppies. If every single, if every single dog in a shelter were adopted tomorrow, there would still need to be at least 3 million dogs, 3 million puppies purchased every single year, just to meet the demand of what people have right now in their homes. just to meet the demand of what people have right now in their homes. We are 100% willing to work with local shelters, 100% willing to work with any local humane group that wants us to help them in any way. We think there's, we think there is a place for families to adopt homeless pets. And we think there's also a place for families that want to get a purpose-bred puppy as well.
So you brought up the Humane Society of the US, since you were involved, or one of you was working with them. What, do you know what their policy is?
Policy on what?
In terms of being a puppy-friendly pet store.
Well, HSUS hates us, there's no denying that. They certainly do hate us. We are the largest storefront, the largest target for puppies in the States. If PetSmart did sell puppies, which they don't, it was never their business model, but if PetSmart sold puppies, HSUS would have never heard of Petland, because they're a big company, and that would be their big target. I can tell you that HSUS's policy on helping local shelters is worse than ours, if that makes sense. They don't give hardly any money at all to local shelters to actually help homeless pets. We are a big believer in local shelters. We are not a big believer in national animal rights groups that collect lots of money and do little to actually solve the problem. We're a big believer in local shelters, local rescues, and local groups.
Well, can I ask a question to staff? I mean, in light of what, these handouts tonight, were handed out tonight, right? Does staff have these already? Did staff look into that?
We received some of these copies via email, I think.
Okay. Is staff prepared, I don't care, any, any, and all of you, are you prepared to make a recommendation on this? That, to go forward with Petland?
I don't think we would be prepared to make a recommendation. Our thought was to open this up to the discussion of the board, provide the direction of the board. And we can certainly go back at that point and do a lot more research and check references.
All right, so is this something maybe we table tonight and bring it back at a later time? Does anybody wanna do that?
We would certainly welcome the opportunity to speak with anybody now or at a later time to answer any questions.
I gotta, I mean, do you have an issue being that close to two restaurants? I got an issue with that.
I do, too.
I got an issue with that.
We would actually like to find a place that didn't have restaurants next to us either, because they're actually a lot dirtier than we are.
You're like right next door. So to me, I'll be honest with you, I am not-
Yeah, that's my biggest concern.
We have, we have, we have stores, and I was joking when I said before.
Didn't sound like it.
It's too close to two restaurants. So I'm not gonna respond to it. I'm against it just for that reason.
Can I answer the, or could you articulate the question? I can answer as far as the-
The question is, I, I'm just giving you my opinion. You're too close to two restaurants.
As far as a food versus animal thing, or?
I eat, people eat in a restaurant. You got a pet store, live animals. Go in, go pet, go pet, fine. You should wash your hands ideally. Maybe you got antibacterial, who knows? Then you're going in, maybe you walk into Corner Bakery. You walk into, you know, Sushi Thai. It's just, I don't know.
How big is the space you're looking at?
5,000 per foot.
And it's what, near AT&amp;T and that? The outlet?
Yes, the outlet with Corner Bakery.
Okay, but it's in the middle of the-
Yeah, next to Sushi Thai, in between Sushi Thai and AT&amp;T.
Are you taking two spaces there?
No, it's the mattress firm location.
It's 5,000, right? Okay. All right.
I understand your concern. We do have several stores near restaurants with no issues at all.
If I could ask, if we found another location that did not have a restaurant in close proximity, would that remove any concerns you have?
I think, to be honest with you, just judging from, you know, the input, I just think we need to discuss it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Well, this is kind of the first that we're hearing of it. I just got the email the other day. So I just began investigating this. And I'll tell you, I spoke to a vet other than the one that Trustee Takaoka spoke to. And I mentioned your name, and the response was, "Ugh." And so I need more time to look into that, and-
Would you be okay if we provided references of veterinarians in the area?
Sure.
So Dan Markwalter? Dr. Dan Markwalter is a great friend, really good friend of mine. Dan's here, Dan's here, yeah, Dan's here. In fact, Dan works with a few of the stores. So Dan Markwalter would be a really good one to consult with as well.
Look, my neighbor didn't say anything negative. He said, like I said in my question earlier, he said, "Yeah, your reputation historically was not good." He said he felt that you, you know, where he's at, where there is a Petland where he practices, that, you know, that, you know, you've cleaned up your act as far as the source of where you get your puppies. So that was someone who acknowledged the fact that you had issues years ago. Now, yeah, things look better. You obviously addressed it.
I would say that there are always gonna be some negative things online, because there is a very, very vocal minority that doesn't think what we do as a business model is correct. It's a weird way to say it, but our customers have never been happier with us than they are now. We have record-breaking sales and-
All right, I got it. I mean, my suggestion again is, do we, let's table it and bring it back for the next, what's the next meeting? October?
October 2nd.
Bring it back for the middle meeting, about a month from now, on the 16th, huh?
17th.
17th.
Okay.
Your honor, if I may, are you looking for them to find a different location than the one they're proposing?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's like checking out, you know, I guess, references and such, and talking, I guess, to the mayor of Naperville, and blah, 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 you know? So everybody's got a question, yeah, okay.